Scott and Steve, if you can hear us, would you just...
Just sorry to hear you now, I hear you now.
All right, thank you. Scott Hamel, you're waving your hand.
I can hear you.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning and Zoning meeting of July 10th. I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:06, and I'm going to ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please, thank you. Thank you all, and I'll ask Maureen for, you want to do the roll call?
Okay, recording going. June Daly?
Here.
Andrea Lu Miller?
Here.
And Joycey is now excused.
Yes.
Timothy Ziegma? Ian Rogan?
Is excused unless he zooms in.
Chairman Beale?
Here.
Scott Hamel?
Here, zooming.
Present remotely, John Dyken?
Present.
And Steve Biella Jr.?
Here.
So you have two excused regular members and two alternates present.
Yep, okay, so in that case, I will ask John Dyken and Stephen Biella to join us in the arena of the commissioners, and we'll move on with the agenda, and we'll go from there, okay? Thank you, all right. Oh yeah, one thing at a time, okay. First up is the receipt of the new applications and scheduling of public hearings as required or necessary. The first item is the text amendment application of Robert and Sharon Fontenella to add new subsections to the special regulations agricultural 11(c)(9) to expand the definition of agriculture to allow for single-family dwellings. Now, the suggested date for this would be August 7th.
It is in order to give us time to get the words to the CROG for their review.
Okay, all right, I'm not sure that I understand what the regulation is for.
So we'll be distributing that as we analyze it. What they're looking for is to, basically, the overview is to add text that would allow on properties deemed as farms that are not in a residential zone that otherwise allows for residential.
Okay.
So basically, the POD zone is the zone of focus that may or may not affect other zones, where agriculture is a permitted use by right, that if they have a property that meets the definition of agriculture, the 10 acres or more, they, a house can be allowed, a single-family dwelling could be allowed on the property.
Okay, all right.
That is somewhat consistent with some conversations that have been had and what is in the implementation plan of the POD.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Exactly coinciding is up to for analysis yet.
Yeah, we'll have to look forward to the whole package and the whole overview. Okay, do we have a motion? Okay, motion by Mr. Ziegma, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Millard, do we have further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. All right, thank you. Authorization for administration, this is item B, authorization for administrative scheduling of anticipated addendum to pending Fontenella text amendment application.
So we have another party who is also interested in this, basically, the same text. However, their text wants would be also allowing an accessory dwelling unit on the property. And that wording isn't finalized yet, but if it comes in within, you know, like a week or so, when we can still put them all together for public hearings on the same night, I thought that might be advantageous.
Okay.
So I'm asking that if timing works out, et cetera, with when it comes in, you allow us to schedule that for the same night.
Okay, so just for clarification, that would allow for basically farmland to have not only a main house, but a secondary house as well?
Or accessory. Dwelling unit in an existing building.
In the same POD zone?
In the zones that don't otherwise allow for housing, which is POD, and it may be some other zones.
Okay.
Agricultural use.
All right, that...
Where housing, or single-family dwellings aren't.
That will be a very interesting discussion, I think, okay. Okay, motion for August 7th, if the application is completed enough for the commission? Yep, all right, so we have the...
Staying in everything else, I mean, we have to be...
Yeah, oh yeah.
Have to be comfortable with it, but I just like...
Oh yeah, okay, so we have the motion by Mr. Ziegma, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dyken, further discussion?
Do a different date if it isn't the 7th? We just said the 7th, so like say it's another day, maybe it's posted to another day?
Tell me.
Well, if he's not ready to go on the 7th, then it would actually roll over to the next meeting, correct?
I could do that, or we could have it on for scheduling, you know, either way.
Right.
For scheduling again, or...
For staff scheduling?
We could extend it any time, too.
Yeah.
Might want to rephrase to for staff scheduling of the public hearing if it comes in.
Along, anyway.
Right.
That's, yeah, staff could schedule according to the needs if it's not being set a date.
I'll take that to my...
Are you going to amend your motion?
Add my motion?
All right, you probably make sure you're using your...
Yeah. I had it on.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we'll be able to extend it, so I...
You're going to amend the...
Change, amend my motion to that.
Okay, and do we have the second amendment?
I will amend my motion to comport with Commissioner Ziegma's amendment to his motion.
All right.
All right. Fancy over here, all right.
I've been drinking my coffee.
Anyone?
He's got a large one.
Discussion on this issue? Aye.
Aye.
So Scott and Steve, you're both, right?
Yes, in favor.
In favor.
All right, thank you.
Sorry.
All right, guys, of all the minutes, the meeting minutes, we have the June 5th meeting minutes. I myself, I just wanted to make one small amendment if I can. This is going to be for page 2 or 6. It does note that I asked about the architectural down at the bottom, like the second statement. This is what I asked about the architectural in my life, and the applicant responded. But I'd also similar to, I'd like to color that a little bit if I can, on this, when I spoke about the architectural, I talked about the side of their building looking, they made it look like a barn, it was neat looking, and I asked them to wrap that around, holding the garage doors, and I asked that they consider making the garage doors sort of heavy overhead, to make them look like barn doors, so that it would kind of like put all in. And they seemed, they agreed with it by saying that wouldn't be a problem.
Can you...
I'm sorry?
And the decision letter, yeah, the final decision letter, because I know you mentioned it before, so Ashley and I checked, it does specifically call that out.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure somehow it didn't get lost, because I thought that... But other than that, it looks fine to me, but does anyone else have any corrections?
Motion to accept June 5th as written.
All right, motion to accept the minutes as...
Written, or written?
As submitted. All righty, if that won't know and board what I just...
No, because it's on there.
Okay, because it's in the decision letter, okay.
So it would be, so it would be on the tape, which is a video that's kept in perpetuity and that we usually look to if something's not specific, therefore on the plan, but they indicated that they specifically put it into the decision letter, knowing that was a specific part of your conditions.
Okay, all right.
I'm not sure, I haven't reviewed that yet.
I just was going to try to save you from looking at the tape, so you'd say, oh, here it is.
They did.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept by Mr. Ziegma, do we have a second?
I second.
Second by Ms. Daly, further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 June 12th, the minutes for June 12th, anyone have any corrections?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the minutes as written for June 12th.
All right, motion by Ms. Daly, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ziegma, further discussion? Then all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And...
I have standup.
Okay, all right, so we have two extensions, that would be Commissioner Dyken, Commissioner Miller. Other than that, they are approved. Uh huh, Commission business, site... An application for the Curiovi family, this application has been possible, applicant, use of available extension time to the next meeting, which will be on the 24th, so we have a motion, need a motion to continue this.
You can table it until that date if you'd like. Complete.
Yeah.
Complete the record.
We're just going to, I can just table one on my own, right? Okay, thank you, all right. Bye, releases happen days. We have the request by Erin Charzak for the release of a site pond in, no, 11/28, or tomorrow, or...
No, I went like that, I shouldn't have said that, but you were, I shouldn't have done that, but you were like, it's one of those names you have to learn, ah, it's hard.
So...
So this has, the, it was a subdivision approved a number of years ago, actually completed a few years ago, realized the bond was outstanding, and he's asked for release of it, engineering has gone out and inspected and provided an email saying the existing bond of $16,253 may be released in full.
Wow. Okay. How does it go?
Pretty much, they did have one lot that didn't sell for, that didn't get improved for a while, and I think that was a good portion of it.
I'm surprised that wasn't that much that was in that file kind of...
So, so as antedoteally, we have a... The source at our meetings. Antedoteally.
We are a land use board after all, we're very sophisticated.
We do have a regular meeting, a staff meeting with our finance department, because there are bonds in existence from the 90s that we are trying to clear off the books. So, where, well, some we can't get hold of, and we've actually assheeded a couple to the state. Assheat, there's another word for you. A sheet.
The planning zone commission should be getting paid stipends.
Oh.
That was in the paper today.
Oh.
There should be.
Did you read that?
No.
Read the article in our firm today.
Oh, okay, reading article Harper Kurt about planning a zone and getting stipends.
Woo hoo. A lot of them.
All right, so assheeding this date, all right, so we...
Make a motion to release.
Yeah, okay, let's release the bond.
$16,250.
Can we take like five or eight minutes? Over to the, all right, second, we need a second.
I second.
All right, thank you, Ms. Daly, for the discussion. Um, I think Scott wanted to say something, or was that old?
Did you want to say something?
The only thing is, Madam Chair, I hear this, I hear Maureen, and I really can't hear you when you're talking, to be honest with you, I hear Zig, but I cannot hear you, I don't know if your mic is off?
Oh, I turned it off because I didn't want it, I didn't want it backfeeding on him, all right, yeah.
You're good now.
All right, well, thank you, thank you for that, all right. Alright, well, thank you, thank you for that, alright. I thought I talked loud enough, but, alright, so we had the first, we had the second, do we take the vote on that? So all those in favor, aye, okay?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Alright, coming up next is a request of Thomas Kokomo for the reduction of a site bond being held for 309 Main Street East Berlin. Yeah.
Didn't we need Diane?
Oh, that's right, for Diane Jorsy, she's waiting in the wings. Diane, you're, you're with us, did you?
I am.
You wanna join in on the fun?
Sure.
I have to unseat.
I'm gonna have to un, you know, I'm gonna unseat Steven Bialik, only because you're not here, is that okay, Steve? Uh, Steve's waving.
Yeah, I'm not waving.
He's like, he's like, no, no, don't-
That is fine, thank you.
Don't let the sun go down on me, I know. Alright. Alright, so, um, so you'll remain and cover for-
I got you, Steve.
Brian, alright. So, so, this bond release for the thir- 309 Main Street, I thought we actually wanted to talk to Mr. Kokomo. So, I, I'm not feeling the love, right off the- Yes, yes, please do.
Um, planner comments, we have, or no, actually under commissioner comments, we put the status of group developments. This is actually a bond request that, release that is otherwise, regulated by law as to how bonds work. So, the town is only allowed to hold bonding for items that are part of the project that are incomplete. That's the, the law. So, you know, we put this part on as part of the bond request, uh, under bond requests. Um, I would just say that the, um, the bond, you, at a couple of meetings ago, you approved a modification to the site plan that called, where the retaining wall was called for in the original plan, was approved to be allowed to be graded instead of have a wall. And therefore, there is no wall that's part of the project, so the, holding bond money for something that's not part of the project anymore is a separate issue than anything else going on, on the project.
So, is the bond money being released only pertaining to that wall?
Yes.
It's only, so-
Leave, oh, I guess we didn't distribute.
No, because I don't know-
I thought, I thought we had copied those.
That's okay.
I ended up handing my stuff to, uh, to Jim.
Alright, that's-
So I don't have it in my package either.
Oh, so we don't know how much money we're talking about?
We do, it's, it's listed out. Um, but the bond sheet had a line item on his bond that's being held for the overall project, his site bond, for the overall project. And eighty-four thousand, eight hun- eight, five hundred dollars of it was for the retaining wall. Specifically, it's one line item.
Wait a minute, how much, eighty-four thousand?
Four thousand five hundred dollars.
For a wall?
For the retaining wall, which is no longer required.
Well, yeah, but, I mean, who's building this wall?
We have it.
Is it in our-
Down here, yeah. Yeah.
And this thing, oh, I thought this was for something else.
I, I-
I don't-
My concern earlier, uh, but, uh, uh, this, I rolled the site today. Uh, it is great, uh, to a somewhat grade, uh, it's not rated to a final grade. And, and, uh, there's trees there on the property and other garbage on that property where those walls are supposed to be. So, you know, between the first building and the second building, there's trees laid down and stuff, and I just wanted to make sure that everything is cleaned up, if this is what they're doing. You know, clean it up, make sure it's clean and finished, because that's what you're getting the, the release for.
Do you remember offhand how big this wall was? I got the impression from him, it was a four-foot wall.
It was high enough that he needed, uh, certification and per-
Buspect's least six.
And how long was that wall?
It was going along, it was wrapping partially onto the north side.
We should have, we should have kept that wall.
Application, your, the applications. So, and would go behind buildings sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, and behind buildings three, four, and five, up towards the road. But not, I don't believe it went all the way out to the road next to the-
I just-
Existing house.
What are the minimum dimensions for permitting, that require permitting?
Um, I think it's either three feet or four-
Oh, so what's, this, okay, so that's not-
Four feet, and then-
So it was gonna require engine-
God bless you.
Over four feet, it must be, I think it was six feet.
Okay.
I think it tapered.
Yeah, it tapered, but there's the highest point, I think-
Eighty-four.
But I guess, again, it's a wall that's no longer on the plan, so holding money for something that isn't on the plan, um, could be challenged.
I don't, I don't think-
Where grading is otherwise, grading otherwise on here, I'm, probably, but let me just check. If establishment and-
Can we say, can we say that?
Final grading usually is required until, until later.
Okay.
With, uh, final grading, uh, you know, and everything cleaned up, that's all we gotta say is, uh-
Oh, in other words, uh-
Release the check when, when, when the, it's-
When your work is done?
And, and, uh-
Well, there's still, it's a construction site, so the final grading doesn't have to be completed when they don't have, like, the buildings three, four, and five, that this wall was partially behind, isn't even, you know, it's barely framed.
Three, four.
I mean, ver- barely, it's the first building behind the old house. It's three, four, and five, and they don't have, their trade inspections, they haven't even started, um,
Good.
Putting in the wiring in that building or anything yet. I checked with the building, it's like, what the, what the status of that was.
Alright, any questions from the commis-
I just wanna clean up.
Yeah.
So, and then I do wanna further, in case anyone's doing math in front of us, that Jim did recalculate the bond amount with the new, with, and he, I think, ended up forwarding a new bond sheet after these were printed, because this shows the eighty-four five on it. He had to, um, change the calculation for the minimum retention and the minimum maintenance as well.
Mm-hmm.
Because of that reduction. And therefore, the new number is one ninety-six, one oh eight, which is different than two eighty-nine minus eighty-four. I just wanted to tell you why, it's because of the calculation, the ten percent and twenty-
One oh eight.
That he had to factor in, and he removed it from the bond, he's removing it.
Alright. Well-
He moved, but we already have the money, so you have to release it.
Yeah, I, I am dispo- Yeah, I, I understand where you're coming from, but I, I am disappointed he's not here, because I was hoping to actually discuss the site with him, um.
So I was going to, in, when we got to that part of the meeting, um, uh, pretty much, I think it was within a day or two of the, of you requesting he appear at this meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, councils, we're just, we're talking to each other, and we did get the response from his council that he was not available to attend this meeting. He already knew that, not at that time.
Alright.
Just for clarification on that, Jennifer Capola, your counsel for the record. I called Attorney Reiner the day after your meeting, because we have another matter to discuss. And I did advise him, uh, that you were inquiring about a number of properties the night before, and that it was requested that his client appear at this meeting, I gave him the date, um, and it was actually, uh, I think either earlier this week or last week, uh, that he advised that he could not attend tonight. So, um, yeah, so I, you know, I had reminded immediately or noticed immediately, and then when I went to remind that, hey, you know, the meeting's coming up next week, accepted that your client be present, that's when I told you, because it was on the pitch. Um, but, uh, Attorney Reiner did indicate that if he wanted, uh, specific reports about, you know, particular properties, um, that, uh, you know, to, to go back to him, uh, with those details and what, he would speak to him about it and get the information that we want.
Would, okay, I think-
Off with that.
Yeah. Well, I, I think what the flavor of it was at the time, and I don't wanna dwell on it here, but the flavor at the time was that he'd made some, um, adjustments to the approved plan. And that's what we were concerned about, because these adjustments he just moved forward with, it's not as if he came back, you know, he came in and asked us how, for feedback and our approval, he went ahead and did them. And then he came back and he said, well, it's done and everyone likes them. But, he, he forgets that the commission has the approval power, and I think I just wanted to talk to him about it to find out what the old plan said and what the new plan says. And then we would decide if we liked it. But, that, you know, to go to Attorney Reiner, I guess, or, is that, I, I guess that would be what we were looking for. But, we do have an item in front of us, and I think that it's, it's been made clear that even though we're not feeling the love here, um, that we, um, are being asked to reduce the, um, bond.
So I-
To comply, go ahead.
I did just, there's some calculation here, and, uh, I think you said that I, I guess he, uh, Jim must have, uh, taken off the twenty-five percent retainer off this-
It goes with the eighty-four thousand, with the ten percent, he said, he said, no, I had to change the numbers in the totals because of that up to that number. The eighty-four thousand made that number bigger too. So when it all got added together on the first.
You know, because the-
Oh.
Well, because-
Trust the calculator, listen, I'll, I'll trust the calculation.
So.
Okay.
You don't wanna trust the calculation?
No, I'm, I'm just questioning why we're, we're, uh, uh, taking off the minimum retain- retainer, uh, to, uh, we take it, we take off the wall, the eighty-four hundred and, eighty-four thousand five hundred plus thirteen hundred comes out to, uh-
What do you mean thirteen hundred? Hang on, hang on.
It is thirteen hundred that's, uh, retaining the wall, that's-
That's the-
The original bond is-
Yeah, but-
Thirteen hundred and eighty-four five.
I didn't think that's how we ca- calculated that.
So, if I may?
Yes. I think that's just-
Twelve bond, the amount we have bonding for is currently two hundred and eighty-nine thousand fifty dollars. That should be what the, what finance is holding. Um, the, if you eliminate retaining wall amount of eighty-four thousand five hundred, if you simply subtract it from the two eighty-nine, you're at two oh four.
Right.
However, if you take away the eighty-four five hundred, your total, your subtotal number goes down by eighty-four, and therefore, the contingency goes down-
Yeah.
By the related amount.
Twenty-five percent of eighty-four-
Twenty-five percent, yeah.
Of eighty-four five hundred.
Uh, yeah, each of those goes down by their percent of eighty-four thousand, so you, the number that you, your end resulting number is actually one ninety-six.
Uh, I'm, I'm just, I'm just thinking that the, the retainer during construction, uh, is for the whole project, overall project, you know, uh-
And it's the total number that you come up with, so I'm actually going to suggest that instead of saying that you're reducing the site bond, you're modifying the required site bond by removing bonding necessary for the retaining wall that no longer exists.
Okay. Alright. Any questions from Diane or Scott or-
No.
Online?
None.
No.
Okay. Commission, any questions about that clarity? Okay, I'll entertain a motion then.
I can help with that, but I need to repeat what Maureen said, I tried to write it down, I make a motion to modify required site, that- Required site bonding. Um, with the removal of eighty-four five hundred that was kept for the retaining wall that no longer is part of the plan.
Okay. Alright, so-
The retaining wall amount of eighty-four five hundred, how do we get the rest of that percentage in there? It just does it automatically? Yeah. Yeah, okay. But you can say, with, which engineering calculated the result in a bond required of one ninety-six, one oh- Almost there. Okay, and so engineering calculated with a total site bonding of one ninety-six, one, uh, one oh six, one oh eight. Yeah, that's the balance. I'm sorry, one ninety-six, one oh eight is the total.
Okay.
We have- Repeat that?
No, I think we can get it, no, don't try not, okay, anyone got a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dyken. Further discussion? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Maureen.
And opposed?
I oppose the way it's calculated, I'm just, it's just, uh, my, my calculation says the bond should stay at two oh three, two fifty-eight. And we're reducing it to one ninety-six oh eight. Just my, my calculation, that's all.
But are you voting, you're voting aye, I mean, just for the, the sake of the tally, are you a yea or a nay vote?
I go for the yea.
Okay.
We'll have the engineering-
Reach out, calculate.
We calculate.
Calculate, because-
Finance does follow up with us, anytime we calculate something.
Okay.
Off, well, no, it's a good, it's a-
My question is, is, does the retainer go, uh, percentage come off and the, uh, ten percent?
Twenty-five, yeah.
That come off too.
Or that eighty-
Or that eighty-four thousand dollars.
Eighty-four thousand.
We're almost there, guys.
Listen, eighty-four thousand plus twenty-five, plus-
Thousand-
I know.
Doesn't, shouldn't have been there, like if it, the modified plan was what got bonded,
Mm-hmm.
Eighty-four thousand wouldn't have been there in the first place.
Okay.
So it wouldn't have been you, ten percent.
Yeah.
The items, when you reduce them, and that's why I said to modify it, because when you reduce, you are only reducing by the item. You're not reducing those extras, the, the contingency when you're reducing, because it's still contingency for that item, because that item was there.
Okay.
This item no longer exists.
Alright.
On the-
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay.
Alright, so we're gonna move on to, we're gonna move on to planner comments now, because we're on a roll. Alright, so we have a request of Pat Snow, Little Houses Living LLC for administrative approval of modifications to the entrance berm grading and planting, finished swale grading and unit privacy fencing at sixteen seventy-six Berlin Turnpike to the construction site condition. Okay.
There is.
So, alright, hey.
Yeah?
And I thought we were gonna get out of here by eight o'clock. So you got eight fifteen.
Got plenty.
I wanna get out of here. Yes.
Give an intro on this.
Yeah, because shouldn't this stuff be done, should?
He's well underway with regard to his project, um, and is going to be start looking for COs, doing the final paving, um, within about a week, right?
Oh, this is sixteen oh, this is-
Sixteen seventy-six.
Oh, this is the one by Holly Court?
Yes.
Oh, I, I, yeah, oh, okay, this is Holly Court we're talking about, guys.
Aye, right.
Alright, I'm just so used to swinging the other way.
Yeah, we're getting to few.
Wow.
Don't do one, don't do more than one project at a time, we can't do that.
Great stat, guys.
We can't do that.
So we did go out, Alexa, Jim, Harville-
Alright.
Went out to the property and have, um, no staff objections.
This is vodka.
To what he's about-
I know, I know.
Have no objections to what he's going to explain, if you let him explain, if you don't want him to speak, because it's under planners' comments, if you'd rather me describe what he's doing, but-
Alright, just-
To have him speak or not.
Well, it's planners' comments, let's, at this point, I mean, I know, I know that he's here, so, uh, let's, let's go through it, and then-
Doing it or me?
Oh, why don't you, let you do it. Yeah, Pat's like, let her do it, okay, good.
So.
You speak, you speak my language.
Have this plan.
Uh-oh.
Which might be a problem.
This will be a problem for
To me, definitely. Okay. So, you think Alexa go? So along the Berlin Turnpike, 1676, the Berlin Turnpike southbound.
Yep.
They were, they proposed two berms.
Yes.
Either side of the driveway. And on top of those berms are plantings that are required. Um, he's asking for those berms to be allowed to be approximately two feet higher, which will result in being a little wider because they'll, because of sloping, most likely in order to get the grading that we allow, the two to one slope we allow. And the plantings, when he spoke with his landscapers, the trees that were proposed to be on top, which were, you know, what they were, there were a variety of trees.
Variety, but it's evergreen that was close to 30 feet tall.
That would end up being up to 30 feet tall, you know, at maturity. It was recommended by his landscaper that he modify those to be trees that will stay a little bit smaller. Because once they're up at the top of the, you know, they're on a berm, they're gonna grow taller. Are they gonna survive? Are they then gonna create a hazard? So he'd like to have trees mature closer to a 15 to 20 foot height.
15 to 20.
That was, that was what we discussed. And make that berm a little bit taller, which will allow for more protection from the highway for the residents.
Yeah.
You know, there's not really anything on that side. It'll just, you have, he found is you had the traffic going by on the highway. It just felt a little bit higher is making it more secure for the site.
So total
From say there's a car that goes off, off the pavement, it would
Yeah, Andrew? Go ahead.
Have to ask.
Actually, one
Yeah, go ahead.
One was safety, as Maureen mentioned, with the trees going in height. When you're planting on a berm, if you have a 35 foot tree.
Oh, yeah.
Winds come by.
Yeah.
Potentially that's onto, and it's close enough to the power lines, it could affect. So that was another couple of, just another issue that
So, so because you're there, so let me, let me just ask a question. The berm proposal before you added the height, what was it at?
I think it was five feet, Maureen, five or six. We want to go to eight. But if it's four or six, we want to go to, we're adding two. What's on there now? What's the difference?
So you're gonna go up
To 137, so five.
Six.
So about seven feet.
It is now, yes.
It's, it's seven feet now.
Oh, it's, what's on, what's showing on the plan?
Is five.
Then it's seven right now. It's two feet higher than
All right, so it's going, so seven is where it's gonna max out at.
Correct.
So if you've been by, which I don't know if any of you had time, but it is currently at the height they want it to be.
But that height request has nothing to do with, it's a separate landscaping request.
Yeah.
Even if the berm was three feet high, the, the height of those trees and the safety is still an issue, no matter what height that berm is.
Yeah.
I, I would like, the, the berm is one request for both safety, as Maureen said, with, if you do, a car loses control on the Berlin Turnpike, the higher the better, in our opinion.
Yeah.
As far as trees go, the height really doesn't matter, but either way, I'd like to request to replace those trees with something that doesn't grow as tall.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I think it's a good idea because the first floor of those units are right next to their
Yeah, it's very close to the road.
Foot high, the, the, you know, the ceilings are eight foot high probably. And seven foot will be a good sound barrier for those first couple of units from the highway. Because the highway makes a lot of noise.
Oh, yes.
You know?
Yeah, it does.
I think it's a good thing, actually.
Yeah, all right.
And I guess, I gotta say, Mr. Snow, I went into the project and the price project looks nice.
Thank you.
It, it's, it's, it's better than I thought it was going to be, you know, from looking at it in plans.
Yeah, yeah.
But I mean, as you said, that's one of the things when you see something landscaping wise and you're, and you guys walking through, when you look at it on a piece of paper, it's different than when you look at it in the field. So that's the reason for our request.
Got to give some compliment.
No, no, that, no, that's okay. All right, so I actually, I'm gonna ask, if you don't mind, I'm gonna ask Diane. Diane, if you can, because you kind of know the, she knows a lot about, you know, trees and different things that work with the state level. Maybe there's something that she would wanna, I hate to put it on the spot, but just thinking about it, maybe there's something that she would recommend that you look at for a replacement for those big tall 30 foot trees.
I have a few ideas.
Okay, well, we, can you, can you share them with us so that this way we can perhaps make them part of the plan?
Sure. The, the things that come to mind for me first would be something like rhododendron.
Okay.
Andromeda. Mountain laurel. Or holly.
Can I just make one suggestion?
Yeah.
They're all good suggestions. My initial thought, and I've already done it, is I'm gonna engage a landscape architect.
Yep.
Give a suggestion of exactly what to do. I can provide that with to Maureen. And I'm sure those are probably some of the same ones, but I don't have the expertise and he does. So my thought process was to say, if the commission was agreeable to say, let me go hire the person, just have them look at the whole thing and say, okay, this is what I want to do. And potentially, if there's a few less there, maybe we add more onto the site.
Yeah.
The number's close to the
Okay, no, by all means, just that I know that she usually has some pretty good leads that she could give you.
If Maureen gets, gets it from the, the, the person.
She can share it.
Then she could share it to our expert, Diane.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Diane. Diane, did you have any comment about the proposal for the berm or berms?
Well, I, I'm, I'm fine with what the majority of the commission likes. I'm not a fan of berms to begin with, but whatever the consensus is, I'm fine with.
Okay, terrific.
We giggled because that's what I said in the field.
Yeah.
And now, I don't love berms, but they have their
Well, but they have a purpose, they, they have, kind of have a purpose with this, you know?
That's why I giggled, I'm sorry for that.
Yeah, exactly. All right.
I just, I think from a maintenance perspective, you know, depending on the steepness of the berm, it might be a little bit of a challenge to keep it looking neat, but I, I just, I don't like knobs.
Understood. No knobs.
No knobs.
No knobs. Okay, that's good. All right. So don't, all right, so what else do we have? Is that, is that basically what the adjustment was to the?
Two more, I think.
Okay, two more. So we, we settled the berm thing and now let's move on.
Go to the fence or do you want to stay on site?
Rather go to the fencing.
Fencing.
We had one with red. Red marks of the fence, you have that one? You have one with red mark?
Well, I've
Yeah. So the approved, so share that one if you can. Oh, okay, it's already up there. So you'll see between each of the units.
Move the mouse.
The orange.
Can you? So people
Not units, between each of the buildings.
Yeah.
There was
Yes.
On the orange, on the original plan.
Yeah, so this way the people on line.
Biding that space between each of the buildings. The, he found and staff concurs that those fences really do not serve a purpose. There's no windows. So the, the facing walls of the two buildings don't, it wouldn't be creating privacy. The only, what it would do is perhaps inhibit walking through and also create an area to hide, harbor, or whatever. You know, actually, and, and make it more difficult for fire apparatus to get around, et cetera. So what he's proposing is in lieu of fencing between each of the buildings, putting privacy screening alongside each of the patios between the units so that the patio has privacy where the unit occupants might be. But the walkway or the, the grass area, the grass areas, they're not walkways, but between the buildings is actually free and open. So he's like, he's originally was
We had that.
Fences in between. And then he said, but in lieu of that, how about the privacy fencing? So it's kind of
For some reason, I thought you had privacy fencing on the original one.
Had, we did
I mean, not
Not as many as what I'm showing here.
Oh.
So we, we increased the numbers, made each unit. So if you come out of any unit, you're gonna have two fences on each
Yeah, yeah.
Either way.
Well, that's good.
So that was the
That's a bonus.
Where they were at the end of each building.
They're actually in the middle.
Yeah.
Between the units, yeah, right?
Yeah.
Between the unit.
Well, if there's no window spacing each
That was the second modification he'd like to make.
All right, I think, I think that's a positive. I think that's a positive, but the commissioners online, Scott and Diane.
I agree with that.
And actually, Steve Biella, I guess you can comment too, if you need to, if you have something to say. All right, so everyone's agreeing online. How about us, guys? Consensus of the commissioners, that's a good thing, yes, with the, the new replacement privacy for the screening of the little patios. Yeah, okay, all right. So that's a good one, right? And now for the last but not least.
Item is the grading around the rear of the southeast west side of the property. So that bottom corner.
Oh, okay.
Twelve and thirteen.
That was proposed and designed to sheet flow towards Holly Court, which really isn't because it's really grass, so it's, you know, but just kind of taper
Yeah, yeah.
Infiltrates. What he's proposing to do, they cleared that easement to put in the utilities and that'll be reseeded and graded, et cetera. It is barely graded, but reseeded and planted. And that easement that goes down to Holly Court, instead grade so that there's a swale that brings any runoff that does not permeate all the way into that area to then have it flow down towards Holly Court through that kind of opening between the properties. It's still on the property on Holly Court, but instead of going towards her yard as a whole, it goes
It goes into the swell.
The, the easement.
The riprap or whatever.
Where it is anyway. So that's
Okay.
Here in this bottom corner, instead of it just tapering all this way, it'd be routed, any overflow water would be routed down to go down the
There's a swell back in there anyway.
The, the area, there wasn't a swell at that point.
Yeah.
But to note is that the, this is groundwater, ground runoff. The leaders from the roofs all go into their stormwater system to go to their stormwater system that they
Install, yes.
Yeah.
See, now I don't, now I need the, the source.
Oh, jeez, that's all right.
But, you know, it's all going, you know, all the stormwater is going towards their stormwater systems.
Okay.
But, and that's the roof, from roof runoff, et cetera. This is really the rainwater that comes down and hits the ground that they're redirecting.
Behind those two units in the corner, were that, yeah, those, what units are those? Can you just
Twelve and thirteen.
Twelve and thirteen, behind them was, is that a grass seed area? That's all grass?
All grass.
Okay. And you have the plantings on the other side and stuff, okay. I, I just want to make sure that, I know that you said that some of it would be directed to the stormwater to go. I just don't want it flooding over that hill. You know, how you talked about, you know, in the middle of the development, well, I can't even talk myself anymore. How Holly Court is all below. I mean, you're, you're trying to, to make it so it goes into the swale and goes out into the street to more hook up with Holly Court as opposed to flooding down that hill.
Correct.
Because we don't want to wash away that hill.
So we actually did discuss almost precisely that with don't, not to create a swale
Yeah.
In the easement.
Yeah.
Instead have it sheet flow for the width of that easement. So that it absorbs as it goes down through the grass.
Yeah.
And we did bring out the deputy director of public works, you know.
Okay.
With us to, to look at what makes sense.
Yeah.
Jim doing in there.
All right.
Other Jim. Jim Horrible from
Well, that seems to make sense too. Any questions from the commission? Online, oh, okay, Ms. Daly has a question.
So I, with the view on this computer on our screen, I can't tell where the homes are in relationship to the swale. I guess I'm curious if we have a heavy downpour, you know, a lot of rain. And, and didn't the swale, was that on somebody's property that they've been utilizing, but they're aware of the swell or, or swell is
Along the southerly property line and no new water will be directed.
I thought it was gonna
It is.
Okay.
What happened to the annex?
Yeah. It's not designed, that way it was designed to, he was trying to flow over a long area. He's trying to have less flow over the long area.
That's why he's doing the swell.
Hard of
And that'll sit in there.
Property owner at Holly Court.
Catch it.
Now, he did approach or have a discussion with the Find a way, is it my mic that's not working? Oh, okay. Steve is having
Who's that? Oh, Steve Biella, okay.
So that, along that side was the swale that was there along the southerly property line. And, oh, so he did say that he had spoken to the owner on Holly Court, which is Mrs. Alstrand. And I did ask that we get confirmation, this was just yesterday.
Yep.
So I did ask that we get confirmation from her that she doesn't have an issue with
Yeah.
This, the way it's directing, because really it's only her lot and the easement is even on her lot, correct?
Yes, and I stopped down there after our meeting and today, and there's still papers and so she might be away. But I'm sure she'll be back and I, I'll talk to her and send you an email or, or stop in.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, she travels.
Anything else from the commission?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead, Diane.
So participating remotely, we didn't have the benefit of seeing what Maureen was pointing to on the plan. So I'm trying to envision this based on the discussion. But would it be possible or helpful, and I don't want to throw a wrench in the works, but would it be possible to have like a detention basin in the southwest corner of the lot to sort of slow whatever runoff would go to Holly Court? I just keep remembering the photos that were presented to us with all of the water issues, Holly Court and beyond, that, I mean, we don't want to have anything add to an already existing problem.
Yeah. Would you, are you proposing then the swale and a bit of a detention pond or the detention pond in lieu of the swale?
Detention pond kind of in addition to, to
Oh, okay.
To give you more capacity. I'm, I'm just thinking of the capacity.
Yeah.
Frankly, I, I, nothing against Jim Horrible, but he's not an engineer. I would almost prefer to have the town engineer kind of weigh in on it.
So actually, Mike is the one that marked up this plan that we have here in person with regard to it. Right, the comments in blue are his.
Sent it to, yes, correct.
Yeah, he, he made these comments that are all the write-ups on here, but we can certainly have him. I don't know if with the comments he had walked the site or not. I'm, I don't remember if we discussed him having gone out there. I'm wondering if conditioning the modification on his approval I'm wondering if conditioning the modification on his approval and installation of of detention suppression if found to be necessary even in the future.
Yeah.
You know, if if engineering and the Z E O find that the site requires additional detention along this that corner that that we can order it to be installed.
Yeah.
That's what you look, you explained. I don't think that there'll be that much of water going that way because it's been pretty much a flat area that's going to pitch down a little bit. So all the grass and everything else goes soak up a lot of water before it gets over there. But if there's has to be a little lower spot to detain, detain a little bit of water, detain a little bit of water, that that's not gonna be the, make the difference.
I would, I wouldn't classify it as detention because you.
No, just flow it down.
I don't want any water sitting there either, so you want to just go and then be able to.
Slow it down, basically.
Yeah, we're just trying to.
Happy to, I'm happy to put that in.
Maybe instead of having a pitch, it goes to flat, you know.
Yes, we'll just let the engineer modify it.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Diane. We're going to add that in as well, I think. It's the consensus of the commission, yeah. All right, so.
We're actually just thinking about if that's how you're leaning.
Yes.
Determines that appropriate measures at the direction of the town engineer be taken as opposed to come. Because none of us, you know, none of us, talking to you are engineers, that, you know, they may be able to suggest something that we don't know exists.
Yeah.
Or or that becomes available.
Yeah, it may or may not work.
Years when we have that kind of event that happens or.
Yeah, okay, but I think it's the consensus of the commission that we're we're agreeable to it. All right, so that's the next one. Do we have any more?
There is actually one more thing.
On this plan?
Our mind.
Oh, boy.
Was, you recall that there was a lot of discussion about the fence along the westerly property line and you settled on black estate fencing.
Can you just move the mouse so these people online can see along Holly Court?
Fencing and it wraps around.
Yeah, okay.
As well, but it's basically the, no, go.
No, no.
Other side.
Other, towards Holly Court.
Holly Court, no, 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 the other way, the other way. Now you have to swing over.
There you go.
Yes. Oh, my goodness gracious. She's having.
There are trees.
Yeah.
And then the development side of the trees, there's an estate fence that was left a little bit off the ground so critters could.
Yeah. Make their way through.
Make their way, thank you. And it's a black estate fence that is four feet high? Or was six feet high?
No, it's it's forty eight, what you saw there is forty eight, that is the wrong height. It's going to be six feet high, seventy inches, not quite six feet.
That's what it was approved at.
Correct.
Well, actually, they don't need to do anything with that. That was informational for us that you're in compliance.
Correct.
Okay.
That I will.
If anyone goes out and sees four feet when you asked four, six foot, it was misordered and the six foot is on order and will replace that fence when it comes in.
Yay, okay, that's good.
Want to mention location or is that, I thought that's where you were going with the.
Is there a location for the fence?
We had pushed it, from what we saw, that we pushed it closer on our side to stay away from the tree roots and the drip line.
Yeah.
So on the location of that fence as well.
Yeah.
At the recommendation of his arborist.
Yeah.
Which he did get, that arborist, remember, we talked about the certified arborist.
I thought we had decided on that.
And they, he he very much recommended once they were in the fieldwork that they be pulled closer into their backyards of of his development.
Yes. All right, no problem. I don't think there's any issues with that, okay. Anyone online? Yeah, no, okay.
Just one question.
Yes, go ahead, Diane.
Certified arborist or consulting arborist?
Certified.
It was, we got the document we needed at the time when he had that report done. Jennifer and I both checked the it against what you had directed as far as the title and looked it up on the on the website of certifications.
Okay.
I don't remember the details of it now, that was when he first started the project, but we did, I remember going through those motions.
Yeah, it's, my recollection is it's supposed to be certified consulting arborist.
Arborist, yes, it was that that terminology that we, and and he provided the the documentation that we put into the file.
Good catch, good catch.
Job.
All right.
That's what I do.
Okay.
That's what you do.
Anyone else have, all right, so how are we, that's it?
Maureen has something else.
That's it? That's it with this project?
I believe so. Yeah, that's all the notes I have in my.
Okay, all right, so now we can move on. So now we can move on, we flip the page? I want, I know.
Load on approving, discuss.
Um, do we want to, do we have to have a motion?
They have a motion on that or?
It's in.
Yeah, a motion, motion to approve these stipulations, discuss.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Zigma. For the record, and do we have a second?
I second.
All right, so Ms. Daley has a second. Further discussion on all of these little adjustments. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And those opposed, so moved, okay, we're good on that. Next up is commissioner comments. This is a status update, concerns related to approved development projects. All right, we added this onto the agenda because a lot of times we come up with great notions as we're driving around town and we look at some of the stuff that we approve or we see things that we have questions on and stuff, so we want to bring it to the planner's attention. Does anyone have any issues, burning issues at this time? Things that you see around town that bug you?
Can I preemptively address a couple of issues that I know have come to the department either from commission members or from other inquiries we've gotten?
Okay, please do.
Up in the past and I'll maybe preemptively address a few things.
Okay.
Um, so, and again, I want to revisit that at the last meeting, you know, recall that Council Coppola had recommended that if you have specific things to discuss and known concerns, that we noticed that project on the agenda so that the developer can respond to it. So we won't, from a staff standpoint, we won't go into nitty gritties because they aren't here to respond, but these are things that have come up. One of them is, we know that Pistol Brook Holdings is something, they are subdivision at Orchard and Kensington Road, that subdivision is something that regularly we're getting information on. One of the things you have in your package is the environmental report that was provided to us. So the, I did not copy the entire report for you, it was some tens of pages long. So we did provide the summary, a cover letter for you. The takeaway is no anticipated concerns, they've done the the covering and and soil amending that they needed to do to satisfy per the environmentalists that they engaged with.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Were they supposed to raise the elevation of that property up over the same height as the road? I mean, it's higher than Orchard Road now. When you go into that area where they bring the dirt in, it's higher than the road is.
Than Orchard Road, yeah, because it's coming up towards Kensington Roads and then they're not at their final grading yet.
Okay.
But it is, it was to be raised so that the houses along Kensington Road were at Kensington Road height. We went, we've gone out there, right, but then it grades back down and yes, Orchard Road is less than than the height of driveways will be increasing in height as they go into the property.
Okay, I don't recall that when we first looked at this property, so.
We'll look at that specifically again, but we did look at that grading plan a number of times. That was the third thing on my bullets as far as grading goes, because we've been out there a couple of times with the grading plan.
My concern is I just don't want the runoff going down into that brook that goes down into the the Wells site over on Elton Road. I don't see any. Have to make my notes something.
May I make a comment?
Yes, go ahead. Yes, go ahead, Ms. Jersey.
Um, so there is quite a bit of silt and dirt being tracked onto Orchard Road that is being heavily deposited right next to a storm drain or actually over a storm drain that leads to the brook that you're concerned about. And I noted today when I was coming by that the apron, you know, their silt pad, the apron that's supposed to kind of intercept that as they're leaving the property, the tracks seem to be coming more from the side of the apron than head on, so it's, they're not actually taking advantage of the full length. And so every single time that the, that it rains, it seems to be when all this mud is getting tracked out onto Orchard Road and going into that first storm drain particularly, so they really should have some sort of silt control there ideally like bales of hay or something around that storm drain, but that would be in the pathway of traffic, which I don't think is the right thing to do either. I don't know the solution there.
Yeah, so that was, so I guess to preemptively, again, to return to my preemptive comments, the the grading, the tracking, we did bring that up to them. I talked to them again yesterday and said that because we'd gone out and there was nothing in the road, but it has been dry. And I called the developer, Mark, and said, you know, and it was, our conservation commission also made the comments with regard to the tracking. And we noted that it was specifically, seems to be specifically after rain events. They commented that they, you know, had a fairly open site for getting the dirt, you know, as it becomes available from a number of different sources. And Mark responded that he would be, because they're right, it's towards the end of the amount of truck deliveries they need. They still need a good number of deliveries. You might notice there's a huge depression where the pond was, the irrigation pond was, he said they've had to, the way you fill it is, and again, I'm not an expert on this, but the way you fill it is intermittently so that it dries up as you fill it. You don't want to just fill it because then you'll have the moisture that'll dry out, get stuck, and it won't settle right. So, you know, they do that intermittently. So that's a big depression in the middle of the site that you can see from Kensington Road most clearly. But that now that they have, that he was planning on setting up some more controls as to where the trucks were coming from so that they could also monitor who the truck drivers are and what the truck drivers are. Again, today, immediate report that there was a lot of debris, mudslide in the road kind of thing. And so Jim and Polly went out this morning and then contacted Mark again. And they said they'd take care of it and clean it up. As it turns out, the developer, the the contractor that was delivering some of this stuff has been a contractor that has worked with the town a lot, and he did reply to Jim that he's had a number of new drivers and he will immediately, and he was supposed to have swept the road and and shored up some of the erosion controls this afternoon. We didn't get the chance. Polly might have gone back out. He was going to try to go back out this afternoon. I don't know if he did, but we were like wondering if that would have happened before the seven o'clock meeting, thinking maybe some of you might have driven by actually and would have known it was cleaned up by this afternoon, just on your route.
Question, yeah, question if I can, yeah, but no, because I do see the road gets cleaned up and then gets dirty, gets cleaned up again and stuff.
Control that silt going towards those storm drains, that's what we'll.
That storm drain, where is it leading to? And the reason I ask that is because there is a pipe that runs under Orchard Road that immediately dumps on the hill going down. There's a huge, like, it's a huge drop and the river or the stream is at the bottom of it. And this open is just literally an open pipe. And I I remember raising concerns years and years with other planners. And it just sort of fell on deaf ears because there was so much pesticide and everything, and they had garbage bags. Everything would just tumble on down the hill.
A bunch of times for it to get cleaned up.
Yeah.
I was the E O.
And I mean, it's not like you go down there and pick the trash out because you really have to be a mountain goat, but but I'm wondering that storm drain, is that, does that hook up to that open pipe? So anything going down just crosses under the road and down to the.
Probably.
Into Little Brook?
The Brook.
It's not, so that pipes, so that storm drain doesn't lead to anywhere? It doesn't connect to anything? Oh, good grief.
Pipe coming out of the drain goes into the little stream there and that goes up the other pipe and down the road. But on the tracking pad.
That's nasty.
I make the suggestion on track it pad that they, because listening to Diane, that they're.
Diane, it's all your fault.
They're hitting the the mud, basically on the outside of the track it pad, some of the outside tires are hitting the mud and dragging it out. That track it pad should be redone and made wider. You know, when they put the stone in for a tracking pad, eventually that track pad fills up with dirt. Now they gotta restone it and restone it and and make sure the track it pad keeps on working.
So they have done that a number of times. They're probably not, again, the opening may need to be adjusted a little more, but that is that and cleaning the road are the two things that when we have told them, they have bolstered up the tracking pad and cleaned the road.
Either they're bigger, bigger stones that let the water go into the.
Items. I'm trying to pull up the storm drain system.
I'm just.
Seeing the the catch basins, but I'm not seeing the piping.
Yeah, I'm just wondering why it's just an open pipe and not like capped off somehow to keep the debris, but I mean.
Typical.
That is.
Yeah, the the usually where you catch stuff is in the catch basin, from my experience. You're catching it in the catch basin, but then the pipe just goes out and where you have your outlets, they're just open pipes to go out because they clean out. I don't know if you've ever seen them, but typically public works departments will come around periodically, once a year or whatever, take off the grates and vacuum out your storm drains. And get all the leaves and the natural.
Yeah, it's supposed to be a yearly event, but it's more like on a five-year cycle. Yeah, I know, I know.
Works is, I know, I have one in front of my house, a different town, and it's pretty much every year or.
Oh, good.
Two years.
Just me a year and a half to get mine done.
All right, well, okay.
It probably just depends on the amount of debris you get.
We want to pull on with this meeting.
Good.
Okay, all right.
They already.
Okay, so that was, that's a concern. All right, is there anything else that you want to talk, any other projects?
That was most of Pistol Brook. Again, we're continuing to monitor.
Okay.
They will still be bringing in the trucks. And then I had, you know, we already somewhat discussed, did you have another comment on that one? I'm sorry, because I might.
Got big pipe coming out now. Big, there's a big pipe that they just spray painted orange so they don't hit it with the truck that's coming out of the ground where they're bringing in all the dirt and.
I'd have to look.
Polly had to see it, it'd be obvious.
Yeah, they, he might have looked at the plan. I'm not, I don't remember looking specifically at that. That, we weren't in the site yesterday, we were looking.
Oh, okay.
He pulled it.
Yeah, both quickly.
Yeah, we really weren't, because we, that wasn't a site visit with the with the developer. I'll look into that.
Here.
Okay.
She has some photos.
And it's late now.
Again, there, you know, we didn't have them come. He was gonna try, you don't have anyone on the.
No.
There, they just spray painted orange, you have five, deep into the ground.
Oh, Steve is the one off screen.
Yeah.
It's pretty deep into the ground.
This is, it's sticking straight up, right?
And some of their testing, but.
Yeah, they put off fill around it. See it right there? There it is.
Where on the site is that? To the left, to the right of the driveway?
Road entrance where they come in with their dirt. See it right through the road. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm thinking it's monitoring. It looks like monitoring pipes where I've seen on, that I've seen on other locations. But I don't want to speak to it.
Yeah.
Without knowing myself.
All right.
All right, anything beyond pistol holdings or that you had notes on or do we, can we move on to the?
The other thing was, so I was going to touch on some preemptively on some of the Kokomo things. But again, noting that he could not be here, so.
Yeah, well, we won't talk about him behind this.
That, but I believe I reported at a previous meeting that Walpole is completely out of 398 Chamberlain Highway. The property continues to be an item on inland and wetlands and water courses. With regard to filling the wetland and their proposed subdivision. So you don't have that before you yet. They do have active permits on the existing structure that's there. So it is considered a construction site because they have active permits. And so, you know, not mowing what's undeveloped land, you know, in the rear and stuff is, they can let that go back to seed. You know, as they want, they should be taken care of along the road. And Polly's sent and spoken to, sent correspondence and spoken to that, them with regard to that on a number of times and had, put it back on his radar for this week for that. He did go out again.
Did they take any junk off the property? There was still the, the canopy pipes from, from the greenhouses on the lay down on the property and everything else. It was pretty, it was pretty gross last time I looked. That was three or four weeks ago, but, but you know, and I do question, and I'm not watering, watering wetlands. But I've been watching the wetlands meetings a little bit. And I would ask to go back to the wetlands, someone go back to wetlands. And they're, they're considering modification of the wetland area that was filled in. And my thing is that the wetlands should be put back the way they were. And then there was maps, there was maps and all aerial views of the wetlands.
Yeah.
Previously, you know, and what's been filled in. So I'm, I just.
They, they have a pending application before wetlands. And it includes a restoration plan as part of the application. So, and the Wetlands Commission did hire a consultant. They hired Land Tech and Anthony Zemba has been at the last two Wetlands meetings, both in May and
I saw you there.
And then Tuesday's meeting. They did close the public hearing on Tuesday. They will be deliberating. Mr. Zemba's report contained a number of proposed conditions of approval as well as at least a couple suggested revisions. There were some other revisions that were discussed. It was expressed by the commission that it was their desire to have, you know, everything shown on the plan. So there was some back and forth, you know, between the applicant's team and the commissioners about if it does get approved, you know, what would be included on the plans and what would be conditions of approval. I thought it was very helpful, so the, the commission will be presumably potentially taking action at, at their next meeting, at their August meeting. So, but the public hearing is closed at this point on it. So it is in their hands. It is their jurisdiction.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know.
We'll wait and see what happens.
See what, what they do.
Okay.
Which I didn't see the last meeting, so maybe, you know, it changed from a couple of meetings I did see.
All right, is there anything else?
The, there was also questions with regards to 873 Farmington Avenue. Some delays with regard to, they have permits issued for the development of the plan that was part of the settlement with H861, which is the lot to the, to the west from it. There was some remediation things, working with the town. That's been substantially resolved and they should be moving forward with some of their construction there. And all going for the most part as anticipated, a couple of hurdles that were took a lot of staff time to, to get over.
Yeah.
That, so that should be moving forward, but there was the question as to what was going on with that property. And then we pretty much had the discussion about 309 Main Street East Berlin earlier in this meeting. The building department consistently is going out and reviewing the plan, the property. Polly goes out with them whenever possible. Do, so that we can monitor inside and outside as well, because we are talking about the occupancy levels. The, you know, a couple of meetings ago, you went through, you know, not converting to three bedrooms. That, just a reminder, that section of the regulations does not, for that zone, does not exclude property from having dens, libraries or extra rooms that, as long as they're not used as a bedroom. And so as is consistent with another project, we had them under your authorization widen the doorways, not include closets. And really the, the regulation doesn't specifically say that they can't have dens and, and offices. As it does in some zones, you have that regulation. And that's why we have to interpret that this zone doesn't say that. Because other regulations do specifically say dens will be counted as, dens and libraries will be counted as a bedroom. This zone doesn't have that wording. And as consistent with another project, actually, that Snow's project right next door. We, where there was an enclosed room, we had him open up the wall prior to CO so that it doesn't fit a standard basement door, can't just be popped in when we finish the inspection.
Yeah.
So those rooms that were created have been opened up to the satisfaction of the interior inspections each time we've done a CO inspection.
Yeah, and I think Scott Hamel has a question. I see your hand up, so hopefully it's your, a question.
Actually, I have two, but I know you guys want to go home. The question I have is, is that the property, Maureen, that has a cease and desist order on it?
So 309 Main Street?
Yeah, Kokomo's property.
So it, I don't believe there is a current cease and desist, is there? Do you know of one? Yeah, so there was a building because they had occupied the building without certificates of occupancy. They did, had they, that was filed with the state inspector, you know, that was served and filed with the state. What do you, what's that office called? Where he filed it? No, the, where, where did that, that order get filed? I'm sorry, I can't, I just talked to John about it this afternoon to make sure I had an update. But the units that were occupied illegally have obtained COs. So they're now occupied legally. Now they can be occupied.
Okay, thank you on that.
Was that the question?
Yeah, and then the other, I have one other quick question because it bothers me every time I go down on Chamberlain Highway. Can you please, for the love of God, tell us where we stand with H2O?
So again, about the same as last time, they're working slowly. I will tell you, I observe people working on the site every day or almost every day that I drive by. They are, they have cut back the crews that they have working. They, you know, when they first started, they, you would see a lot of people working. They are, do have a very much reduced crew or number of people working on the property. But they continue to work a couple, I'm going to say it was maybe a week ago, the road was opened because they were doing some utility work. They, they have definitely covered more of the greenhouses, have the surface area on them. But again, a slow process. They have been doing some interior work as well. That, as far as I understand, they have some communication with the building inspectors with regard to plans and the information they need on their, the plans they get. And some of that groundwork for the drainage that they were putting in within the footprint.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for the question. All right, no, Ms. Millard and.
I have one question regarding 873 Farmington Ave. When I look at the foundation, is there supposed to be cars going to be passing between Joel's and that addition that Tommy's putting on?
No, so Joel's is, so when Joel's is almost on the property line. And the 873 building is at the setback, which is not very big. I want to say it's less than 10, it's 10, eight or 10 feet is the setback. So that's the width is completely on eight, or virtually completely on 873 and will be very small.
So there is no parking that's going to be on that side?
No, they're down, it's probably hard to remember the plan. It was a while ago. But, and yeah, some of you may not have been on the, on the commission. But the parking in the front will be completely eliminated. And there'll be one driveway going in between 861 and 873. There will be some parking along the side of the building at 873. And then they obtained an easement onto what is, well, was the town properties. Now it belongs to 55 Steel. That transfer went through, I believe. There's a small easement there, so they had full size parking spaces that are going to be all along the backside. Behind 861 and 873, that's all parking along there. So that parking area will be expanded. That was all part of the plan. And so out front, where the addition is, the front part of that will stick out closer to the road with a restaurant and a patio and green space. And you'll have that instead of what I finally refer to as paved land all along. There won't be just an open curb cut that pretty much the whole distance. I mean, you have the islands right now, but it's, looks like paved land and it will be landscaped instead. I think the commission was pretty thorough with the front view of that when it came through. It, it gained a lot of attention.
Do you have a question?
One question on, on that project is the, there was handicap park places in the back. And there was a question about where they were going to be exactly and.
So they have.
Is that handicap?
I did just read that not very long ago. I reviewed that. And my recollection from that, which was maybe a month or more ago, was that they have required handicap spaces for the mixed use project. Those will be under the guy, they, they were put on the, placed on the plan. At least one of them is between the two buildings, you know, and they're where they're required to be by code. There's then going to be a, a space on the backside of the new addition because they have the accessible unit.
The unit.
That is, is in that building. So in the new addition. And they were, your requirement was that a handicap designed space be put there. But it, and dedicated to that unit, so signed for that unit. But it won't, my recollection is it won't be signed as a handicap space in case it's someone who's transporting, someone who may need it, or the person in the unit has a different handicap where they may not have it, but it won't be one of the required spaces. They'll have handicap spaces that are required for the development. And then that unit will have a handicap sized space signed for that unit.
Okay.
Adjacent to the unit.
And Scott Hamel has his hand up, so do you have another question, Scott? Or is this?
No, I just never forgot to lower it. Sorry about that.
Okay, that's all right. That's okay. Diane, you have anything, questions or no? Okay.
No.
All right, so I think that's, that's a wrap with that, right? Okay, good. All right, so now we can actually move on to the next, which is supposed to be the executive session. Is it actually going to be executive session? Or is it just, yeah? Okay, all right.
Bye.
Oh, you're not invited? Okay, all right. All right, oh, good night then.
Just as to, to your point, we did the test pits there and there's been no environmental issues, no nothing, so that's where we're.
Okay.
That's a good.
All right.
Good answer, thank you.
Good, good night. All right, so we're going to go into executive session. We'll make a motion to go into executive session. We're going to have to call Diane or, and Scott, I guess. And it's going to be a quick executive session. Yes, all right, so it'll be a shortened one.
Now we got 20, 20 minutes to nine o'clock.
Well, listen, well, I don't, I want to get out of here. Just because we don't get that many evenings where we have a chance to get home before the sun really goes down. I know, I know.
Our goal was.
Do we have a, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
We'll move the motion, go in a second.
Okay.
Session with Maureen, our attorney and our assistant.
Okay, Alexa, and then also with the commission, full commission, Diane and Scott and Steve Biella, as they're zooming in. Okay, so the motion is at eight, what time is it? Eight 39? And the motion is by Mr. Zigmont. Do I have a second? Yeah, we'll be adjourned after the executive and we won't be making any decisions, right? Okay, so we had the motion by Mr. Zigmont. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Daly, thank you for the discussion. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so with the folks online, how are you going to do this? Are you going to send them a separate link? Oh, we're going to call, we're going to call you guys, so that's where we're going to go. All right. Do you want, do you want to confer?
He's got everyone's number in that phone.
Everyone's.
He's got everyone's number.
Do we have to conference them in on that phone or? Okay.
She must have downloaded the town.
Scotty, Andrea is going to call you.
All right, thank you, Andrea.
Somebody's going to call you.
All right, call me.
Okay, no, no, the attorney's going to call you.
Oh, boy.
Jennifer's going to call everyone, so we'll talk to you soon. All right, bye for now.